Okay, Vice Mayor Schaefer, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call the regular meeting to order at 7:00 PM on 2/24/22. We just adjourned closed session with no reportable action. So, Councilmember Miller, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have the next item, please?
Next item is roll call. Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
And Mayor Middleton is absent.
The next item is our video statement. This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, February 28th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed at the city's YouTube channel.
Okay, great. May I have the next item, please?
The next item is approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Miller, second by Bruins. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, move is forward unanimous.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
And Councilmember Bruins, could you start us off, please?
Sure, be happy to. Since we've last met, I've had an occasion to be out with the public in a few meetings, and then I had one board meeting. So first of all, I would just like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for partnering with PAL for a fun cornhole tournament last Friday night. With the proceeds to go to PAL, I don't have any final results yet, but it was a lot of fun. I think this is becoming an annual event. And this is the first time we partnered with the Chamber, and it was done very well. I also appreciated our city, new city manager, Ashley Feeney, spending several hours with me earlier last week, and the opportunity to show him parts of the city, and just spend some one-on-one time with him, which he's done with each of the councilmembers now. Thank you, Ash. Last, this past, or this month in February, I was the speaker at our local CHASON meeting, Area 7, 8, and 9, which is my local neighborhood association. And I just want to commend Kathy Morris, who diligently attends our council meetings, but who kept our association alive and well during COVID, when some of the other associations really suffered from that time down. And as a result, we had projects that were completed. It was a lot of fun to talk to them and to engage with them, and they continue to be a strong group of people. Yes, so earlier this week, I attended the ABBA Mixer, our Auburn Boulevard Business Association, and happy to report that they have a renewed rejuvenated effort moving forward. They've got a good plan to engage other members of the Auburn Corridor area, and want to thank our city manager and some staff, and a couple of our police chief and Commander Frye for also attending. It was a lot of fun to be out with the business community and see that they have a lot of energy and a lot of enthusiasm for really moving forward and partnering with us with our plans as a city to improve Auburn Boulevard. And then lastly, yesterday, we had our Regional Sanitation Board meeting, and spent quite a bit of time on a report on a project called Harvest Water. And if you haven't been keeping up with this, this is our master plan to recover water that's generated from our region and to recycle it and to use it for farmland in the south area of the regional sands service area. And it's been, it's been an ongoing project for a number of years, but it's really coming to fruition. I only regret that we didn't, don't have any open land here in Citrus Heights to take advantage of it. You know, I recently met with someone who moved up here from Southern California a few years ago, and he said to me, "The first thing I had to teach my kids is LA stole our water." And so, we are now not sending so much water out of our area, but this is, these are our water rights. We are using them for our benefit, for our community. And so, I'm very excited about that project. More will be coming on it, but it is moving forward with a lot of robust effort and enthusiasm. So, just another testament to the fact that our sewer district really is a good steward of the environment and of our natural resources. That's my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bruins. Councilmember Miller, what have you been up to?
Oh, not too much. Working on my day job. But a week ago, I did chair the Regional Transit Board Meeting. The full board did approve a voting change, which would give the city of Sacramento four votes, the county four, and add a vote for Elk Grove because their population's been growing to two. The rest of the cities, including Citrus Heights, would have one vote. The thing they threw in there that I did not like was the city and the county wanted alternates, and not only alternates, but non-elected alternates. And that's something that I voted against along with Carrie Howell. Now, the issue is, for this legislation to go through the state legislature, they're looking for a unanimous board vote. And so, we're kind of in a sticky situation where nothing may happen because of this. Having said that, today, I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting. And of course, I think you can guess their biggest concerns: shoplifting, encampments, illegal dumping. They've got engine blocks, tires, whole cars, and graffiti. And so, they're looking at hiring an additional security slash maintenance firm that looks out for these types of things and takes care of the graffiti. I know our officer that we have covering the Sunrise Marketplace does that as well, but it's just, and all the centers have their own private security, but no one's really coordinated so with each other. So I think this is going to bring all the parties to the table, and we can help in that faucet. In addition, I know, our officer's Van Hooten, did I get that right? No, who's our officer there?
Shoutin'.
Shoutin', yeah, thank you. Officer Shoutin' also does a lot of classes on loss prevention and counterfeiting and things like that. So I think this will work real well. And one of the things they can do when you have like a big mess left behind is that can be handled that day and cleaned up. So they are looking seriously at providing that service for the businesses in the Sunrise Marketplace. And that's all I have to report.
Well done, Councilmember. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, sir. Just airborne met today, and basically, and if my memory is correct, I think they talked about a total of about $15 billion between state and federal money that they hoped to see at some point come through California, places like that, not just our area, but things like charging stations, mobility hubs, car sharing, and more fed dollars for purchasing electrical vehicles, electric vehicles, like the state has provided. And that's about it on that. And the only other thing I would say is thoughts and prayers with the people of Ukraine and Russia. What we're seeing is horrible, and both sides are suffering in one way or another. And we have a large community of both here, and our hearts go out to them, and our thoughts and prayers are with them.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. Well, I as well spoke to Area 5 at their meeting. It's nice to see. We had a, I attended a meeting a couple of months ago. We just had a few people. This time, we had a little bit better turnout. I'm really looking forward to people coming sort of back to the neighborhood associations and really sharing with us what their concerns are. So that's what was my primary focus there, was I wanted to hear from folks in my neighborhood, as what concerns they had. So we had a little Q and A, which is good. So then, today, 3:00, we had a library board meeting, just a little housekeeping, review the budget. Really nothing much to report there. And I just want to, as an additional note, like to support what Councilmember Daniels said about the people of Ukraine. And they have lots of relatives that are local here, and my heart goes out to the, I really hope that this, this thing can get turned around at some point, rather than just them becoming part of Russia again. So anyhow, that's all I had. Can I have the next item, please?
The next item is public comment, and members of the public may address the council on any agenda item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please either complete a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. If participating via Zoom, use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And I do have one written public comment for this portion of the public comment period. So I'll go ahead and read that one now. So the public comment from Roger Johnson states, "At the last city council meeting, the council voted to approve the July 1st, 2022 fee increase for Republic Services. Since then, a $15 million check was given to Citrus Heights, presented by AMI BARA, federal funding. Please reconsider the fee increase, using of the $15 million, giving thousands of some economic relief, especially seniors, veterans, and lower-income households on fixed income."
Great. So next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items four, five, six, and seven.
So before we move forward on that, I have to mention that I did chair the Planning Commission, and we heard item six. So it wouldn't be appropriate for me, as long as that doesn't get pulled, if the, any items we want to pull from the consent calendar. As long as that item doesn't get pulled, I can weigh in on the rest of the items, not that item. So do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Move approval and consent calendar with noted that the vice chair is recusing himself on item six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, that's unanimous with the fourth of us, with the four of us. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing number eight. The subject is zoning code updates. The recommendation is to move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under Section 156B 3 of the guidelines, and to introduce for a first reading, read by title only and waive the full reading of an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 106 of the Citrus Heights Municipal Code, the zoning code section.
Good evening, everyone. Can, excuse me, can council hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm Eric Singer. I'm the Assistant Planner with the Planning Division. I'll be presenting on the proposed changes. Yes.
Yeah, can you, so I just want to make you aware that you have about 14 minutes for this. If you think it's going to take longer than that, we want to, we might want to push this back.
Point of clarification, 7:30 is the start time. We can start later, correct?
You can start later. I think the goal would be to start as close to sort after 7:30, just for, you know, for the public chiming in for that, but if it's 7:32, I think that'd be fine.
Okay, sorry, Eric.
I should be able to, no, not, not at all. I should be able to get this done before 7:30, not a problem.
Thank you.
So discussing the proposed changes to the zoning code, just a brief overview. Some of the more significant changes that we're proposing have to do with sections such as commercial fencing, tree protection and mitigation, use permits, and then just some other minor updates for clarification purposes throughout the zoning code. First off, looking at the commercial fencing section. Currently, fences and walls have two triggers for when a staff-level design review is required. Both of those criteria are not necessarily the clearest. So part of the effort here is to help consolidate some of the requirements. This has been spurred on by the fact that over the past few years, staff has received multiple inquiries regarding fencing along commercial corridors like Auburn, Greenback, Sunrise. And on occasion, some of the proposed fencing projects fell below the requirements for design review. They were thus allowed to be constructed without staff being able to review or, you know, approve the design. So considering the significant visual impact that fences and walls can have on a site, especially on a commercial corridor that acts as a gateway into the city, staff reviewed zoning codes from surrounding jurisdictions, as well as their own previous planning documents, like the Auburn Boulevard specific plan. And we're therefore proposing the following changes to the zoning code as it pertains to fences within commercial zones. One, making sure that design review is required for all fences proposed within a commercial zone that is also visible from the public right-of-way. Two, clarifying some of the language, basically eliminating the greater than six feet tall and greater than 100 feet long language in the zoning code and saying instead, basically, any fence that's going to be over eight feet tall and/or visible from a public right-of-way is going to require a design review. And then lastly, because we are going to be introducing design review for commercial fencing, we wanted to have certain design criteria, looking at maximum heights, making sure that the fence or the wall is, you know, an extension of the architecture of the existing building, and that they're going to be creating better, you know, more visual interest on the site. And then lastly, and I think most importantly here, when it's fronting a pedestrian route, which is most common along a commercial corridor, the fence and wall should be set back, when the site allows, at least three feet to allow for landscaping to help create further visual interest. Now, moving right along here to tree protection and mitigation. Currently, tree mitigation is only achieved by replanting of new trees on site. Essentially, there's no requirement or incentive for a developer to retain existing trees that are below the minimum size to be considered protected. So that's any, you know, native oak tree that's greater than six inches in size. There are other species that qualify if they're greater than 19 inches. But essentially, to offer additional incentives to preserve those existing trees, we're recommending to also allow onsite preservation of native oak trees that are under six inches within the buildable area of a lot to be counted towards the mitigation total. So for example, if a four-inch value oak is preserved within the buildable area of the site, it would count as four inches toward the total mitigation requirement. This standard is currently in place in other agencies, including Sacramento County. So just kind of looking at a visual illustration of this. This is a parcel map that was introduced to the Planning Department recently. The buildable areas of the sites are highlighted there in the yellow squares, and the yellow circles represent trees that are under six inches in diameter. Essentially, they are, you know, preserving these trees to count toward the mitigation total for the removal of the trees within the yellow squares. So instead of having to replant new trees that may not take root and may not be, have the same survival rate as the existing tree on site, we're stating that preserving a tree that's under the six inches should count toward the requirement because they may have a better chance of surviving in the long run. The last kind of major change that is being proposed has to do with use permits. So currently, if a use on a property that was originally approved via a use permit is discontinued, and then it remains inactive for more than a year, the zoning code states that a public hearing still has to be held to revoke the use permit from the property. This is just in an effort to kind of eliminate duplicative processes and, you know, help to streamline a little bit of efficiency within the department. We're proposing a few of the following changes. One, if the use on the site is discontinued for more than 12 months, the use permit should expire as long as the following criteria have been met. One, there's no appurtenance structure that's required for the site. So an appurtenance structure would be like a gas pump at a gas station. It's essential for that use to occur at that site. So if that structure doesn't exist, and the use has been discontinued for 12 months, that use would automatically be revoked from the site. And a similar use, if proposed in the future, would require a new use permit hearing. Two, if an appurtenance structure is required, so that gas pump is there, but then it's removed, and that use is discontinued for 12 months, again, the use permit would automatically expire without having to hold a public hearing. A few other amendments that were proposed include signage allowance increases for non-residential uses in a residential zone. For example, like a care facility should be allowed a slightly greater signage, you know, allowance than what is currently allowed in the zoning code. There is some criteria for installation of emergency generators at wireless telecommunications facilities. These are all just pursuant to federal statutes that have been passed over the past couple of years. And lastly, just some new definitions for clarification purposes for arts and craft product manufacturing, and again, having to do with wireless telecommunications facilities. So at the January 26th Planning Commission meeting, concerns were raised regarding a particular change that was proposed regarding parking on previous surface requirements that was included within the staff report that you read. Although the Planning Commission ultimately recommended approval of the section that had to do with previous surface requirements, staff discussed internally and found that this section should be further clarified. Therefore, we recommend that that motion that is introduced tonight includes the changes that's recommended by the Planning Commission, but we're actually omitting that section that has to do with previous surface requirements. And furthermore, the motion that staff is introducing here is under motion number two, is reflecting the amended ordinance that was sent to council earlier today that struck that language regarding previous surface requirements from the ordinance itself. So that would be the motion that staff is recommending council approve. And I am available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Bruins, you have a question?
Yes, just real quickly, thank you for your presentation. It has, my question has to do with the part on appurten, I don't know how to say the word, appurtenant, you know, structures, that one. Gas pump structures.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there another example besides gas pumps where that would apply?
Another couple of examples that we have seen in the past would be, for example, a car lift at an automotive use. So if the car lift is, you know, still in existence, for example, on the Auburn Boulevard Corridor, if there's a car lift, and, you know, that, that use has been there historically on the site, then that is actually grounds for that use to continue. If that car lift were to be removed, that is, you know, critical for that functioning of an auto shop, for example, that, that would, you know, qualify as an appurtenance structure. Another appurtenance structure might be something like a drive-through lane and ordering board, or, you know, the fact that the lane is created in the first place would also be considered like an appurtenant feature of the site, essentially.
So the appurtenant structure is basically something that defines the use of that particular business? You're not going to find a gas pump in the middle of a park, as an example. You're going to find it at a gas station, only.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
Quick question. Wasn't sure, Eric, when you, when you say "commercial zone," does that include our commercial overlay corridors?
It, it would. It's essentially anything that, so if it's a special planning area, for example, if the uses that are outlined within the special planning area do include a commercial use, then that, this, this criteria would apply to those areas as well.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah.
Councilmember Daniels?
You kind of went fast. You did a really good job, which kind of went fast. So I just wanted to make sure that you said that you've struck out the one about the surface issues, correct?
Yeah.
We, we definitely did, yes. The previous surface requirement section has been removed.
And then, and then it was my understanding we were also maybe looking at something in regards to RVs parking in front of their houses for more than 72 hours. Has that been taken out, or am I looking at that wrong?
I have it got wrong, too.
So that was a bit of a misconception, I think. The language having to do with RV parking actually already exists within the zoning code and the municipal code. That section is simply being moved from one section of the zoning code that did not fall under the parking title. It's being moved under the parking section so that it's consolidated, and it's mainly for clarification purposes, so that it's a little easier for, you know, the layperson to parse through the zoning code. But that, that requirement always did exist within the zoning code, municipal code.
Okay, and you said it. I just want to be 150% clear on it. People can still park their RV in front of their home as they prepare or come back from a trip for up to 72 hours.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
Okay. Next item, please, is the public hearing for this item, correct?
Yes, so you just, yeah, open the public hearing for this item.
Opening a public hearing now. Do we have any comment from the audience or from speaker cards?
I have not received any speaker cards for this item, and I'm looking at the Zoom. I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. So...
Just, Tim, real quick on a concern. I do have a little bit of concern about the three feet. You know, and I understand the point, that you want landscaping and stuff like that in front of these businesses, possibly, probably. But it just seems to me, I see a whole lot of non-landscaped areas in front of these kind of setbacks. You know, we have a lot of homes that front property, or, excuse me, roads like that, and then there are businesses. And when I drive around, what I usually see is something that's just been left to sit there, and it looks horrible. Just looks horrible, not to mention, you know, it's literally a taking of, of three feet of that property owner's property because we want to see them put some flowers there. So if, if, I would rather not see it there at all. If not, if the other, the rest of the council still wants to see it, I would ask that maybe we, we reduce that maybe to two feet then, or something like that. Again, it just, when I drive around, I notice this all the time, and it irritates me because, and I understand, you know, and a lot of them are homes that, it's the backside of the home that is alongside of the road. So they don't care what it looks like. And, and again, there are some businesses that are like that, too, that they simply are just not going to bother to, to go out there and keep it clean. They might have to keep it mowed down or whatever, but it doesn't, it's not attractive most of the time.
Any other comments from council?
Just a question. So on the setback, let me go back and look at that again because I, as I read it, I thought it had, was applying to businesses only, but am I wrong on that?
So it applies to any property that's zoned commercial. And, you know, it, there are cases where there are residences that do fall within a commercial zone or that are, you know, near a commercial corridor. This particular criteria would only apply to fences that are proposed on properties that are specifically zoned commercially. The guidelines themselves are not kind of hard and fast rules, so they're, they're outlined as more criteria for how staff should evaluate a proposed fence in the most objective way possible while still implementing good design guidelines. And again, this is, this is always going to be a case of when the site allows for these types of
Right.
criteria to be applied.
Okay, so, so it applies to commercially zoned property only, and only as it's allowed. I did, I did hear you say that earlier and read that. So there are some instances where it's not feasible to go back three feet because there's not that much...
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Just to clarify, it says "should," so it does give us some leeway there to make a determination as, on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, that's good. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Counsel, there's actually two items.
Okay, let me just go back, yeah, let me go back to the, hang on a second. I'll do a better motion. Okay, so item eight. So I move that we, to approve the determination of the proposed amendments, that they are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act under Section 1561B 3 of the guidelines.
All those in favor? Oh, do we have a second?
I did second that one.
Thank you.
Not the second one.
Councilmember Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I further move to introduce for the first reading, read by title only and waive the full reading of this ordinance, as shown in Attachment 1, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights, amending various sections of Chapter 108 of the City Council, um, excuse me, Citrus Heights Municipal Code.
I'll second that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, please.
The next item is our public hearing number nine. The subject is the public hearing number two on the redistricting process. And the recommendation is to receive a presentation from the city's demographic consulting firm, and to hold a public hearing to review draft maps and receive public input regarding the composition of district boundaries. So good evening, Vice Mayor and councilmembers, Amy Van, City Clerk. So tonight, this is the second of four public hearings in the redistricting process, and it is the first public hearing with a draft map. Despite our robust communications outreach, we have not received any draft maps from members of the public. However, we will be hosting a public workshop on March 3rd from 5:30 to 7:00 PM here at City Hall. So if there are members of the public that are interested in seeing... City Hall, so if there are members of the public that are interested in seeing more information and wishing to draw a map, they can come to that public workshop. Robert McIntyre with National Demographics Corporation will give a presentation. Council will notice that the presentation will be very much like the presentation at the public hearing on February 10th. This is an opportunity to provide the public with an overview of the redistricting process and to solicit input. So with that, I will go ahead and turn over the presentation to Robert McIntyre.
Thank you, Ms. Van, it's an honor to be here, mayor, council members, with you again for this second public hearing. As Ms. Van said, this, this second public hearing is still part of the outreach process, where we're trying to help the community see and understand the same terms and concepts around redistricting that you as professional electeds have mastered, and also to make sure we have a common language, so when you're, when you're caught at the grocery store or in different community forums and meetings, you all have the same language to speak and answer questions. So next slide, please. We do have a schedule laid out, and I have to say, it's been an absolute pleasure working with, with the city's staff. There is a webpage that's been developed, so you see it on the January 20th date there, the redistricting webpage, which was launched very early, actually, before we had our first meeting, and there's a link there to that webpage. But just looking back briefly, as you might recall, that we were required to redraw our census line, or redraw our lines every, after every decennial census. And so we know that the federal government released the census data August 12th of last year, but even though the federal government had done their job, the state of California still had some work to do on that data, and we didn't actually get the completed data back from the state of California until early October. And so city staff was, was very much in front of this particular project, making sure that they had already worked with us to schedule out these meetings that we had before us. Next slide, please. And so, as you recall, we had our first public hearing on February 10th. We did have a deadline if anybody wanted to submit any draft maps, which we did not receive any, but if community members did want to submit draft, making alternate proposals to the existing map, that they had to do so by February 17th, so that we could process them in time for tonight's meeting. That turned out not to be an issue, but, you know, it, it could become an issue if people want to draw maps at the March 3 community hearing, community forum, because we'll need to process those, process those pretty much within a day or two, so that way they would be available for viewing. At the third public hearing on March 10th, the goal is that the third public hearing on March 10th, that hopefully the city council would feel comfortable and down their selection, ideally to one map, so they could select that map and introduce the ordinance. However, if, you know, if, if, if that's not possible, then we would have to talk about additional special meetings in order to do so, because we must adopt our final map before April 17th. So we've got that fourth public hearing scheduled March 24th, March 24th. There's a little bit of flexibility in our, in our plan, but not a lot, so we'll definitely need to work hard to stay on track. Next slide, please. When we're drawing maps, there are criteria we have to follow, and, and so the existing map that you have in place from your initial districting process followed this process, and it meets all the requirements you see here. So for people who want to draw their own map, some of the things they need to think about is equal population under the federal law's requirement, meaning that each council district has to have roughly equal population. From the highest high to the lowest low, the difference can't be more than 10% of the total population in one council district. That's a very important criteria in drawing maps, that population balancing. We also have to make sure that we're not racially gerrymandering when we draw our maps. Looking at the California criteria, we also, we, we, we need to make sure that we have geographically continuous council districts, and what that means is we don't want one council district to bifurcate another one and split it into two pieces. To the extent we can while observing these other requirements, such as the population balancing and geographically continuous, we want to keep communities of interest and neighborhood together as best we can. Obviously, that becomes an issue as we're trying to do population balancing, but we need to work as hard as we can to do that. We also want to make sure that boundaries to council districts are easily identifiable. Your current map does this very, very well. And also, to the extent we can, we want to make sure council districts are compact. When we think of compaction, we think of as close to a circle as we can get. Well, unfortunately, you know, cities are not perfectly shaped to have four or five circles, and so, you know, we, we do the best we can to do that, but what we're, what that means is we don't want to have a, a, a map drawing our council district where we're going past one group of voters to grab another group of voters in, in that case. So that's what we're talking about by compaction. Also, under the Fair Maps Act, we need to make sure that our maps do not favor or discriminate against a political party. At National Demographics, we do not download the voting data or the registration data, party registration data when we're drawing our maps, so the map that's currently in place does not in any way consider that. If somebody were to submit a map that considered, you know, we want to make sure that that's not one of their choices or, or efforts they're making when they're drawing a map. There are traditional mapping criteria that don't follow under the federal or state law, and they're not, they're not must or mandated criteria, but they're traditional criteria that often are used or sometimes used in drawing city council district maps. One of the things we want to look at is if we need to move a line, we want to minimize the number of voters that are shifted election. Why would that be important? Well, if I voted for a council member in 2020, and I was expecting to vote in 2024, but we moved a line and that pushed me into 2026, I would be angry, because I would feel a little disenfranchised, because I, I had to wait so long to vote again. So we want to minimize the number of people that would be impacted like that. We also want to respect the will of the voters in the last election. The voters chose to put each of you electeds in office, and it should be their vote that decides whether you stay or go. So we try not to intentionally redraw maps to pair council, because we want the voters to stay in control. If we're aware of future population growth, we can make minor adjustments to the size of council districts to account for this, but within a very small band because of that federal requirement around population balancing. So the first thing we did when the 2020 census data was, was finalized, is we, we put in the census data on your current map to see where you, if that was still legally compliant. And so here we see, if you look at the table in the center of the slide, the total population within your jurisdiction is 850, and of course, that's divided up among five council districts, and that goal is to have roughly council districts, so the ideal council district size would be 17, 70 people. That's total people, it doesn't matter their age, whether or not they're residents, or, or what their status is, or, or their ability to vote, this is just total. And so here you see, right below each of the council district numbers, you can see the total population within each district, and you, right below that, you see the number of people, the each council district is either under or over, and the percentage of deviation that they're under or over. And so when we add the lowest low, the absolute value of the lowest low to the highest high, we see the total population deviation for this map is 5%. So in this case, this, this would meet the legal requirement and be below the 10%. Next slide, please. One of the other things we want, we need to, to historically marginalize protected class voters. And so in this case, there are, there are some voters, Latinos, within your jurisdiction, who would be a historically marginalized protected class voter in the state of California under the law. And we see that Latinos are primarily concentrated around Greenback Lane, but there are other pockets of Latinos around town, and so when I see a map like this, I, I see, you know, relatively even dispersion around town, that's typically something to be celebrated, because it means that specific groups don't feel like they need to be, live within an enclave to feel safe. Next slide, please. Here we have the map for, for Asian-American and Pacific Islanders, the citizen voting age population. You see that there's a relatively low count of, of Asian-Americans, and where they are, they're, they're spread out in census blocks throughout the city. So once again, no, no ability to impact the vote within one council district, so we're not able to build a, a council district that would have a majority, either Latino or Asian-American, council district. Next slide, please. Similarly with African-Americans, it's a statistically a low count, there is a small concentration near Sunrise Boulevard in the southeast, but once again, very small count, not statistically significant, but again, we see blocks throughout the city with African-American citizen voting age population. Next slide. There are other ways, from a policy perspective, and selecting a map is very much a policy conversation, once you've achieved, achieved all these legal requirements. And so one of the things we want to look at is the things like other socioeconomic demographics. So for example, here is a map that shows the proportion of the population that are renters. So in areas that are red and yellow, that's a high proportion, more than half of the people between green, yellow, and red are renting in those census blocks. When you get down in the purple, you see between 0 and 25% of the people in those census blocks are renting. And so this may impact the way the council looks at the need for resources around the city in building council districts. Next slide, please. So the goal of tonight is to have the second public hearing and to hear from your community. We really want to hear from your community around how they define their neighborhoods. Neighborhoods are defined by geographic boundaries, so if somebody wants to call and share what their, what their neighborhood is and how they define it, we would hope they would do so by identifying those actual streets, or, or, you know, man-made barriers, railroad tracks, washes, things like that, that we could find on the map and identify. Next slide, please. We also want to hear from your community on how they define their communities of interest. Communities of interest is a very open idea, really, it has to do with a shared issue or characteristic. There's some notes on the slide here, but probably the best example I can give you is I used to drive home through a city right next to my, where I lived, every day, and every day I would get stuck behind the Metro Rail Track for about 15 minutes, and no train would go by, there was just an issue with the, the sensor on the track. Well, I promise you, I and everybody who got stuck at that railroad track every single day were a community of interest. Communities of interest aren't always around something that's a problem, sometimes it's around something great. What we're looking to hear from is how people define their communities of interest, and if they do define a communities of interest, would their community of interest benefit from being grouped into one council district, or would you prefer to be split? An example of where we very commonly hear a community of interest that wants to be split would be like a senior center, where you have a large block of high propensity voters, they prefer to have the idea of two council members that, that have, that will listen to their needs rather than just one, but they typically have the numbers to support it. Next slide, please. So tonight, as, as you open your public hearing, we are hoping to hear about neighborhoods and communities of interest from your community members. With that, I'm available to answer questions now and after the public hearing.
Any questions from council? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and I have one speaker card. Is that all we have, Madam Clerk?
I do not see any raised hands in Zoom, and I do not have any written public comments, so yes, that is.
Thank you. So I'd like to call up Michael Legromassino to speak, you have three minutes.
Good evening, members of City Council, new city manager, thank you for taking the job, appreciate it. Tonight, I'm here asking you to take the existing map from the last 10 years and continue that without any major changes. As was mentioned, that we're all within 5% of the total high and low, I don't see any reason to change. He was asking about community of interest. Mr. Daniels, District 1, I believe, if I remember right, where we are, is a kind of a split district. Half the district is on the other side of the freeway, and the other half is on this side of the freeway. When the original map came out, yeah, that could cause a problem, because two different requirements, like I said, one side feels that they probably, because on the other side of the freeway, they're cut off from this city. That was the only major thing I had when we went to district elections, but upon reflection, I can see why it happened. The other one that is seven, eight, and nine, Ms. Bruins' district, they finally, all the neighborhoods got together and formed one big one, which worked out pretty well. The rest of you, all your districts are split between various neighborhoods, you've split up the neighborhoods, not everybody's happy about that, but really, I don't see any other way that it could be done to balance. I do know that 2030, we're going to have a big, major change, because we're looking at several major changes, population that are coming, and so I ask at this time that you consider leaving the districts as they are. I don't see any reason to change them at this time for the next 10 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so no, no further speakers? No speakers from the audience, kind of your last chance? All right, no, okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. So do we have any comments from the council members? Seeing none?
Yeah, I got just a few. Can we put a map up of the actual districts?
Just give me a moment, I'm bringing that up.
Thank you, Amy. So when I look at this, everything is, is worked good, I think, you know, for the most part, for all of us, and the concern I get is just a little bit on potential growth, and that being at the very bottom of the blue area for Councilmember Bruins' area with the Mitchell Farms, I think 260 homes, so probably about 400 people or so, that's a, that's a pretty good chunk of, of folks added to our district numbers. I'm hoping that on District 1, my area, up at the northwest side, that Roseville Point comes in at some point over the next few years, and that could be, I, I think that was 200 homes, but I don't remember for sure, but something is similar to what we're seeing there. And then on District 5, the mayor's district, our future anticipated growth with the mall, and we've, we've talked about 2,000 homes there, and that's next year or two, but it is definitely likely to happen on some level, a relatively short time, hopefully, because I think that's what's intended to spur growth or redevelopment in that area, too. When you look at my district, my side, I believe I'm under, if I remember right, and so that might get me a little closer to, but when I look at the blue area, it's a little bit over already, and we're looking at adding 400 homes, excuse me, maybe 400 people or so, and then when I look at 5, it's the same situation, and, and so if we wanted to think about that, if we wanted to keep that in mind, one thing that we might be able to do is cut 5, where I believe that's Arcade Creek. And so as we get information back, I'd like to see some numbers on what happens to 4 if we include the area of 5 that goes down to, it's Arcade Creek, isn't it, if I'm remembering right?
I think so.
It's that far north creek area that's on the map there, and just see what that number looks like, and, and see if we want to weigh that with the issue of what's going to happen at the mall, hopefully. And again, that's kind of looking at a crystal ball, you know, who knows what's going to happen up there, but I kind of think that we're all settled on the idea that we are going to increase the residential presence on the mall property, bottom line. I don't, I don't see any development happening at the mall that does not includes, include quite a bit of residential area. So just something to look at as we bring this back, what happens if we cut that section of 5 out, put it up into 4, and, and massage it out that way, and then, because I don't know what to do with, I really like Councilmember Bruins' district, because it cuts so nice and crisp.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
And so, and, and unfortunately, it's, it's there at the bottom, and you really can't throw it into 5, because that would defeat the whole purpose of potential future growth in 5. But, so we might have to just leave that alone, or create some little thing along the way if we wanted to. But anyway, just wanted to take a look at that as we bring this back, to see if that's something we, what, we might want to think about. That's it.
I guess we'd have to figure if it's going to happen in less than 10 years.
Oh, man, it better.
I hope so.
It better.
We'll see.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Okay. So I'd like a motion if I could.
Vice Mayor, this was just a public hearing to receive input, so we didn't have any action for the council to take.
All right. Well, very good. Is there any other action we needed? Can we move on to the next item, please?
Yes, we can move on to the next item if there are no further questions from council.
May I have the next item, please?
The next, the next item is regular calendar, number 10. The subject is fiscal year 2122, mid-year budget adjustment and financial forecast update. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 2122 budget.
Okay. So.
Good evening, I'm Bill Zanoni, the Interim Administrative Services Director.
Could you please make, turn on your microphone? We can't hear you.
Is it on? It's on, green light's on? Does that work? There we go. Okay. Again, I'm Bill Zanoni, Interim Administrative Services Director. There we go. So the items that we would like to discuss with the council this evening is a review of the 21, 22 city budget. Specifically, what I'd like to review with you is the general fund, which is the city's main operating fund, and the American Rescue Plan Act, which is actually a subset within the general fund. And then also, I'd like to give you an update on the city's 10-year financial forecast. So just a little background, the city's two-year budget for fiscal years 21, 22 and 22, 23 was adopted by the city council in April of last year. The city council received a budget status report on the first quarter of this fiscal year in October. And this evening, we will, or I will be presenting a, an update on the revenues and expenditures for the, for the general fund. And then we'll be coming back to you, probably the first meeting in June, with our mid-cycle review, which is a status report on where we are for this fiscal year as we get close to the end of the year, as well as projections and possible amendments to the second year of the two-year budget. And I'm saying we because Tammy Nussardi, Finance Manager, is here with me, and Tammy worked pretty closely with me on this, on this process. So to get into the 2122 budget, looking at the general fund, the budget that was adopted for this fiscal year projected revenue of $32.6 million and expenditures of $32.7 million. As of the end of the first week of February, which is about 60% of the way through the year, we had received $17.5 million, or about 53.5% of our general fund budgeted revenue. And our expenditures were $18.9 million, or about almost 58% of the budget. So we had, as of early February, we had spent about $1.4 million more than we had received in revenue. And this is typical for the way we operate right now. We, we make several, we're required to make several large payments in July at the very beginning of the fiscal year. We pay all of our, our liability insurance premiums. In July, we make a lump sum payment by mid-July of our pension liability to CalPERS. So those are two big payments which totaled together about $2.5 million. And, and then our revenues come in, right now, we're not getting property tax revenue, that'll change next year, and sales tax, there's always a two-month lag. So it's just the timing of revenues and expenditures. So during this period where our expenditures exceed our revenues, we're relying on our cash reserves in the general fund. If and when those are depleted, then we do some temporary interfund borrowing to hold us through until our, our revenues catch up with our expenditures. So based on actual revenues received so far this year and our projections for the last four and a half months of the fiscal year, we are recommending increasing our budgeted revenue for this year by $2.5 million. The additions to revenue include additional sales tax. We received an update from our sales tax consultant the end of January, and the city's sales tax revenue is performing better, better than was projected at the last update last summer, by about $854,000. We budgeted $13.2 million this year. The most recent projection is that this year that amount will be $14.1 million. So that's, that's definitely good news. Motor vehicle and roof fees are about $238,000, we believe, over the amount that was budgeted. When the budget was prepared last April, it was anticipated that our, and you'll recall last year, we, our building activity was, was very strong. It was anticipated that it would level out this year. What we've actually seen is that, that strong activity last year has continued into this fiscal year. We, we think by the end of this year, our revenue from building permits, plan check fees and other building related work will be about $1.2 million higher than the budgeted amount. This is, this is not ongoing revenue. This revenue, we believe, and a good portion of this revenue is from the Mitchell Farms development, where they're pulling permits sooner than, than what was originally anticipated. So this one line item will, will level out, and we're thinking that will probably happen next fiscal year. And then we also received $470,000 this year from our, the California Intergovernmental Risk Authority, the insurance pool that we participate in. And that money was used for, a portion of it, $250,000 for the police department, body worn cameras, to fund a portion of those costs, and the other portion, $220,000 for, to offset, which we'll talk about when we get to expenditures, higher than anticipated general liability insurance premiums. We have a couple of reductions in budgeted revenue. One is for red light camera fines. Those fines dropped significantly during the, during the pandemic, when people weren't driving. We anticipated that that revenue would increase this year. We didn't see the level of increase that we had anticipated. We, the police department believes that that is due to several, several items. One, just reduced driving patterns, people aren't driving as much as they were before. And significant backlog in the court's processing of fines citations. And then the other reduction to general fund revenue is community center rentals. We were more optimistic last April that we thought that we were over the hump with COVID and that our community center rentals would move closer towards its normal level, which was about $500,000. We budgeted $335,000 this year. We're not going to reach that target, and so we're recommending we reduce that down to $175,000, which is about $160,000 reduction. On the expenditure side of our budget, we are requesting an increase in expenditure appropriations of just slightly over $1 million. That's in, we're looking at three departments to make adjustments. The first is the risk management budget. Our general liability insurance premiums this year are about $350,000 higher than what was budgeted. That is not unique to Citrus Heights. The insurance industry for municipalities overall is experiencing a significant increase, and that's the result of increased claims and liability exposure. Of that $350,000 increase, we received $220,000 of additional revenue from the insurance to offset that. And also, our workers' compensation claims payments this year are about $260,000 higher than what was budgeted. In the non-departmental budget, our payment for what we call compensated absences is going to be $60,000 higher than the, than the budgeted amount. We budgeted $300,000 this year. We've had several retirements of long-term employees, and when those employees leave, they're entitled to a payout of a portion of their earned leave balances. And also, our payment to CalPERS for the unfunded crude liability payment that we make in July was about $97,000 higher than the amount budgeted. And finally, in the police department, the city council in September approved a purchase of body worn cameras for the police department. The cost of that was a little bit over $500,000. Of that amount, $250,000 will be charged, or was charged directly to the police department budget. We're using the 250, that 250 from the insurance reimbursement, but we have to adjust the police department budget to reflect that expense. So the net cost to the city is zero, but just from an accounting perspective, we have to show the revenues and the expenditures. So these proposed adjustments, if approved, would increase our budgeted revenue this year to $35.2 million. It would increase our operating appropriations to $33.7 million, which would give us a, a budgeted surplus for fiscal year 2021, 22 of $1.5 million. In addition to these proposed adjustments, our very preliminary estimates at this point are that we, we think that by the end of the year, we will see an additional $1.4 million in budget savings from a combination of position vacancies and other smaller amounts from just operating savings in the department. So while the budget right now, if these adjustments are approved, will show a surplus of $1.5 million, we're hopeful and will monitor this closely as we get closer to the end of the year, but we, we think we will end the year with a, an actual surplus of about $2.9 million. The other, the second fund that I wanted to just go through with you quickly this evening is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. You're very familiar with, with this fund. The city council has appropriated a total of $2.8 million to date of these federal ARPA funds. You appropriated $2.5 million in, in June for restoring about 22 positions in the police department. As of right now, we have, I believe we only have one vacancy that has not been filled. The other positions have all been filled. So of the $2.5 million, as of about two weeks ago, we had spent just under $700,000. The reason we have been spending at a slower pace is it just takes time to fill positions and it's taken a little bit longer than what was anticipated. So based on what we've spent and assuming we will be fully staffed through the end of the year, we believe that of that $2.5 million, we will have spent about $1.4 million for staffing in the police department by the end of June. The small business COVID recovery grant program, which you just approved last month, you appropriated $320,000. We haven't spent any of those dollars yet. I think the city manager will give you an update on that a little bit later this evening. So altogether of our $2.8 million, we have spent $700,000. We are projecting at this point in February that by June 30th, we will have spent about 1.7, with the difference of about 1.1 million, which we'll discuss when you have your workshop in either March or April. And the last item that I just wanted to go through with you this evening is an update to the 10-year financial forecast. Just a reminder that we prepare a long-term forecast as one of our tools for demonstrating fiscal responsibility and financial planning. And this provides us an opportunity to, to look out into the future. Our forecast period is 10 years. It's hard to forecast out 10 years, but we, I think, we, we, we do, we do look out over that planning horizon, and the goal is to identify any major revenue or cost issues. And this provides us an opportunity to not only identify the issues, but to develop a, a plan to address those issues before we find ourselves in a fiscal crisis. And because we're looking out so far, this is not something that we just prepare a forecast and set it aside. We, we update this several times a year. The last update that the city council received was in October. And just, whoop. I'm sorry. As a reminder, this is an estimate and it's based on information that we have right now, and we know that information will probably change tomorrow, and that's why we want to update this. So what has changed since the last update that the council received in October? We have updated revenue projections mainly for property tax, sales tax and vehicle and roof fees that are significant. Those are impacting our budget this year, and we are, we've included those changes as we look out into the future. And then we've updated our labor projections based on the, the changes that have occurred this fiscal year. So I'm not going to go through this in detail, but in that, this forecast is based on a number of assumptions as far as our, our revenues and our expenditures, looking out through fiscal year 2030, 31. I've highlighted the three major sources of revenue that, that really impact our, our, our funding, and that is property tax, sales tax and motor vehicle and roof fees. Those three line items, so those three revenue sources make up about 75% of general fund revenue. So with, with these assumptions, we've tried to be realistic, but also conservative. So you can see that overall, we are anticipating a growth each year, depending on the line item, but in the, in the range of 2% to 3%. We believe that is a fairly realistic assumption. We have not, we have not included in this forecast a provision for a economic downturn or recession. That may very well occur, but it, again, because we'll re-watch this and update it, if that does happen, we'll, we'll revisit this. This, I'm not even going to attempt to walk you through every line on here, but this is in your agenda packet, and this is the, the level of detail that we use for forecasting. At a summary level, what, what we are seeing with our increased projected revenues, again, in the areas of sales tax, property tax, which we will get our first payment in, end of December, early January. of December, December, early January next year, and vehicle and lieu fees, and a slight increase in labor costs, we are in a more favorable position than we were in October. And what we did in October, and what I did, I did again with this version, is we, we have a minimum city council policy for our reserves, is our reserves will never drop below 17% of our operating expenditures. So keeping that in mind and looking out over a 10-year planning horizon where we did have surplus funds available, I've put that in the street repairs line item. So where we were in the October version of this forecast, we were looking, I believe it was on an average of about $2.5 million a year for street repairs with these updated revenue projections, we've, we've increased that to four to four and a half million dollars a year.
Question, question. Bill?
Yes, sir.
Does that include the non-general fund, street repairs amount? We usually spend about-
This is strictly general fund.
Okay, got it.
This is strictly general fund. What I, what we have also included in here is, which is on the detailed sheet before, is repayment of the line of credit, portioned $2 million next year, a million and a half the remaining balance in '23, '24. And $4 million, you can see right below where this arrow is, $4 million in 2023, '24 for the city's match for Auburn Boulevard. So based on that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The recommended action is that the council review the budget status in the 10-year financial forecast and adopt a resolution approving amendments to the fiscal year 21, '22 budget. And I just might add, this information was reviewed with the Finance and Administration Committee on February 9th.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have questions from council? Feeney?
No, just a comment, because I do sit on that committee. That was a refreshing report after what we've been experiencing recently, and so, yeah, I, I just am encouraged by it. Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, first thing, Bill, the red light thing is because people aren't running red lights, so be positive. I just want to, I just want to say that this is a great report. Thank you so much for these numbers. But even more so, I think what's great about this is that we see this growth, this really great growth in sales tax, building activity, motor vehicle, these tell you that the city's alive, it's thriving, it, it's vibrant, and, you know, there's a lot of people out there who really want to take the time of day, all the time, to bash Citrus Heights. And I just want to tell you that, that that's not the case. This is a good city, it, it's, it's vibrant, and we should be proud of it. We still have things to do, we're not perfect, and hopefully with some of these funds that we do see coming in, we're going to be able to do some very positive things to this city with some cleanup and stuff like that, and, and put some lipstick on it, and, and, and it's just going to get better and better. So, you know, please be proud of your city. That's all I'm saying, you know? If, if, if this was a, I got to choose my words carefully, you know, a, a, a bad place, we wouldn't see this. We would not see these numbers. These numbers reflect a vibrant, live city. So thank you.
Council members? Okay. So I just want to clarify something for, if you would clarify something for me, Bill, you mentioned this a couple of times, and when we talk about next year, we talk about something that starts in July, that's the next fiscal year. So, but I just want to clarify, so when would we expect our first payment for property taxes? And about how much would that be?
The, the first payment for property tax will come in to the city end of December, early January. So that, we receive about half, a little bit more than half then, and then the second installment will be in April, May, and then a small cleanup in July. And that should be, I believe what we've forecasted for next year is $6.8 million, so it should be about half of that around the beginning of the year, and then the other half several months later.
And so many of us have been looking for that, waiting for that for 25 years. So it's nice to hear that that's finally, revenue neutrality is coming to an end for Citrus Heights.
We're going to ask for a check, so we'll-
Absolutely.
I, I haven't seen the revenue neutrality agreement, but what I don't understand to this day is we turn 25 January 1st of this year. Why aren't we seeing the tax proceeds moving forward?
The, the-
I know they don't collect until December, so that's probably it.
The tax roll is set January 1st for the following year, or that's the basis for it, and it's on a fiscal year, so the fiscal year starts in July. So the tax, the next full year tax payment, the first installment, is payable beginning November, and so that's, that's the payment that we will get.
I still think we should get the second payments and everybody who's late's payment.
Right.
Absolutely.
That's my position.
So any other comments?
No.
Can I have a motion to accept the, the resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution number 2022 dash as a resolution of the city council of the city of Citrus Heights approving amendments to the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget.
Second?
All right. I have a motion by Bruins, a second by Daniels. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. All right. I may have the next item, please.
The next item is Department Reports, number 11. The subject is homeless navigator update by the police department.
Vice Mayor, members of council, good evening. Thank you very much for the privilege to speak with you this evening. My name is Seth Semino. I'm a detective sergeant with the police department. I have the privilege and honor to supervise and lead our impact team. The team is made up of very hardworking and professional men and women, one who is with us this evening. As many of you know, last fall Sacramento Self-Help wanted to offer a chance for their navigators to provide career development opportunities, and in doing so, our navigator, Tony Morgan, went to the city of Rancho Cordova, and Rancho Cordova's navigator, Gabby Yost, joined us. Gabby comes to us with almost four years of navigator experience. She received her bachelor's degree from Sacramento State in childhood development and counseling. She works for other nonprofits throughout the region, specifically working with troubled youth and those with disabilities. She's also a board member of the Arden Arcade Heart. We are very excited to start this new collaborative journey with Gabby, and without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to Mrs. Gabby Yost.
Wow, thank you Sergeant Semino for that very kind introduction. Good evening, council. It is nice to officially meet all of you, and thank you for inviting me to be here and giving me the opportunity to speak with you all and share what I get to do for our community. It is a pleasure and an absolutely an honor to be here. Again, my name is Gabriella, or Gabby, and I am your Citrus Heights navigator. My role is to provide outreach and resources to those that are experiencing homelessness in the city of Citrus Heights, and also those that are at risk of becoming homeless within our city or right on the border of homelessness. In doing this, I implement a self-help program designed to support those that are willing to take the necessary steps to overcome those barriers of homelessness. Today, I'd like to share with you some snapshot of the 2022 statistics, our statistics from 2021, and two success stories. Can I please have the next slide? So here you see our, a quick snapshot of our 2022 statistics so far. These are current as of today's date, February 24th. In 2022, 78 individuals I have provided outreach and resources to within our city. The next two statistics are sheltered and housed. I just want to say that those terminology I'm using, sheltered as temporary living situations, and housed meaning permanent living situations. 17 households are sheltered in 2022, households meaning that there could be numerous members of that household, family of five would still be one statistic for that. Plus, we also have our winter sanctuary that ends at the end of this week, on Friday, and we are hoping to have numbers from 75 to upwards of 100 of sheltered individuals in that program. And total clients housed 14 households in 2022. Next slide, please. For 2021 statistics, again, there was 40, 145 households, 184 individuals that were provided outreach and resources on the streets of Citrus Heights. 10 of those individuals are veterans. Sheltered individuals, 25 households and 35 individuals. There was no winter sanctuary last year just due to COVID, so we don't have no statistics there. And 34 households housed 45 individuals. Next slide, please. For our success stories, I'd love to share these two clients with you. Client A, I provided outreach, I did an intake on the streets here in Citrus Heights. I was able to provide document assistance and help the client with their P E services and get in contact with that to be able to receive their payments. After a while, the client decided, approached me and wanted to go into rehab services, which was amazing, and we were able to, with the help of heart, pay for a hotel stay to gain three days sobriety before going into Grace House Recovery Home for their sobriety or for their recovery program. From there, the client has graduated with 90 days with sobriety and moved into a women's recovery home. Today, she's continuing on her great succession, working with a heart mentor, working on paying off old debt with a finance advisor. She has her own bank account, and she has, is her own P E service now, so great success there. With client B, client reached out to me for services called, said that they were on their way to getting an apartment and needed help finalizing paperwork and navigating that. I was able to provide that service to her. She was living on our, our streets in a car for 13 months, moved into her first apartment. She has three children, and when moving into her apartment, she was moving in with no furniture, no items. So through donations from our community, through the police department, through our city staff, we were able to pretty much fully furnish their apartment for her three kids and herself, and her move-in day was last Friday. So, next slide. Thank you. And then again, myself, this is my contact information, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak with you today and for listening to me.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council members? Council member Daniels?
Yeah, just welcome, you know, get ready, hold on, and, you know, you're coming from Rancho, I believe you said, and so I think a pretty comparable community or whatever, but the feeling here is, you know, a community gets what they tolerate, and so we don't tolerate what is seen in a lot of communities, and so we'll expect a lot out of you, and I feel confident we'll get a lot out of you, and, but just understand that it's, it's, you know, you probably will come to not like some of us at some level, because we'll be pushing, and, and we really think that, and know that one of the reasons that we do not see the level of problems in Citrus Heights that are seen in other areas is because of you and the position that you're in, and, and so please, I feel confident you will, but please take it at 150%, and know that we'll expect a lot out of you too, okay?
Thank you.
Council member Bruins, please comment.
Well, welcome back, Gabby. We've had an occasion to communicate a little bit. I know you've been out on the streets for how long now, a few weeks?
Since September 5th.
Since September, so you've gotten to know our community a little bit?
A little bit.
And I get great feedback about the work you're doing, so I want to thank you for that, and look forward to forging new relationship with you through our community and directly as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do for our homeless community.
Steve?
You would have thought we planned this when I was out touring District 4 with our new city manager, and I was showing him Rush Park and the historical Rush home, and we came around the corner, and there's our sergeant, and I got to meet you, Gabby, and I want to thank you for everything you're doing. I know you were handling a situation where they might have been congregating too soon for the winter sanctuary, and we appreciate that, I know the neighbors appreciate that. A question I had, and it's probably more for Sergeant Semino, is the count. I know we do our own, we're not, I know, I think the county in SAC City just did theirs or are going to do theirs. Do we have an idea of the numbers and how they've been over the past three years? And if you don't know, maybe come back to council with that.
Sir, are you, the number in regards to maybe a city count?
Yeah, yeah.
Or the SAC steps forward and SAC self-help count?
I don't know what I'm asking. The point in time, yeah.
Okay, the point in time. Yes, so we, we had, we did what we call the Hi-Fi count, and it was an internal count within the police department. We would spend a month of the year, and anytime we would contact an individual experiencing homelessness, we would fill out a field interview card and ask specific questions, which helped guide us to some resources, which was great for the navigator program. We have not done that the last couple of years because of COVID. I could not give you an educated number in terms of what we believe our, our number to be in terms of those in, in our community that are experiencing homelessness. I don't know, Gabby, if you have a, a little more of an educated number from your expertise.
I don't have a, a number quite yet. I am going, my educated guess would be upward of 250 to 300 individuals living on our streets at the moment. The Sacramento Steps Forward count is happening last night and tonight, and it usually takes them about six months to record all that data and come back to us with those numbers.
Okay, well, the one thing I've noticed, though, is, you know, it's here, but it seems to be that we've gotten better proactively in, in handling some of these, and I know they'll go on for days, but, you know, there's time involved in, in handling some of these situations. I'm thinking of like Greenback in San Juan, but boy, just driving around town, it seems doing a much better job, and I just want to say thank you to our navigator and to the police department.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Great, and I, a great presentation, Gabby. I look forward to meeting you, I, and maybe sitting down and have a cup of coffee with you. So I'd certainly like to learn more about how your job works and how we can help you, how can we support you? That's, that's, that's a big piece of, you guys, both you and Sergeant Semino and the rest of Sergeant Semino's team, has a very difficult job, and that all we can do is say and, and take action to support you, and just know that there's support here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right. Can I move on to the next item, please?
The next item is city manager items.
Thank you. Good evening, Vice Mayor Schaefer, members of the council, Ashley Feeney, city manager. I've got a couple of items, but first I want to just recognize and acknowledge Gabby Yost and Sergeant Semino for their good noble work, and really appreciate hearing those couple of success stories you shared, and look forward to continuing to learn more about your work that you're doing and seeing what I can do to support you. about your work that you're doing and seeing what I can do to support you. And a couple of announcements here. Small business grant program, we've talked about that the council approved, it opened today. So today's the first day of a 30-day period that'll close on March 26th and close a business today. The number I heard, we had 12 applications on the first day that had come forward. Megan Huber and Nicole Backs have been doing a great job of getting the word out, worked closely with our finance team to get that program stood up on time, on schedule, to go ahead and support businesses for that COVID recovery. So once we have that data, we'll come back to council and report out on the overall success of the program. The other thing on the COVID front, numbers continue to improve, so good news there. Understanding from the county is the seven-day average is similar to mid-December before the Omicron variant showed up. So hopefully we'll continue to see that trend continue so we can continue to improve as a community and as a society. That concludes my updates. Thank you.
Great. All right. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Anything for the council? Yes, Councilmember Daniels?
Just on future items, you know, we're coming to the end of February, and one of the things that we've talked about recently in the past was, in the recent past, was hopefully getting us moved forward with more community connection, more events and stuff like that. And, you know, obviously there has to be planning periods. And so we've got things coming up like Memorial Day, Fourth of July, you know, Sunday Fun Day in September and stuff like that. So I would like, hopefully, maybe if we could hear back soon on maybe where we are with that, and if we think we're going to be able to put on some kind of events this year and whatnot, before it's too late and we just don't have the time to put anything forward. The community is ripe for that. They want us back out there, and we need to do something. We need to create a splash with, and especially since we've got some funds, we need to do something and get us back visible as a community. So if we could see something on that soon, I'd appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Daniels. We have been having some internal discussions about events and look forward to providing an update on that in the future.
Anything else? All right, with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting here at 8:34. Thank you, everyone, for coming.